This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, thank you.
So glad that it's working. Hey. We do have a quorum. It is after seven, so we will begin. As you can see, the little symbol up in the upper corner, the meeting is being recorded. Welcome Duncan. We can get my agenda up, so. First item is the agenda itself. Does anyone have any suggested changes?
Paul, do you mind sharing that screen again? Because I have it printed, but it'd be great to be able to follow along again. Since my screen doesn't let me. Thank you.
Yeah, so we have the agenda. Not hearing anything. We can move on to item or open to the public for items not related to the agenda. So everyone in the public is doing a great job. So I think our goal is to keep the video for the planning commission members on as this and for others off unless you're trying to get our attention to. Say something you can also, so you could, if you wanted to say something now or later. Put your video on and wave. Or you can mention something in the chat box and I can call on you, so. Does anyone have anything not related to the agenda? Okay, then we can move on to the staff report. We had a few things in the packet itself.
I don't think I've got too much other to report. Council had a meeting last night. They got, they had a number of interesting topics. I shared with you the I-89 corridor study update and also. The. Shared, oh, the housing, building homes together. Update as well. The council also got a presentation from the South Burlington Land Trust about possibly, the possibility of using. The city's wastewater ordinance as a, as a policy tool in addition to being a procedural one. And got a presentation from the Energy Committee about sort of where things have been, where things are at and making some recommendations. So there's a lot of good stuff in there. Happy to send around a link to the TV of that if anyone's interested in any of those topics or the slides.
Thanks, Paul. Does any commissioners have any announcements?
I could just share that I did more mapping sessions, both with commissioners and with some members of the public, and it was, I think, very helpful for folks. So I think we'll have some fruitful conversation.
Thank you.
Help for me. Thank you, Monica.
I too. Thanks, Monica.
Okay, then I guess we can jump right into our work session on the land development regulation amendments. Let's bring in that up.
All right, everybody, so there's a lot in here, but what. And I really appreciate all of your attention, the last few meetings on various pieces here. I think we're getting, these are sort of the key decisions, key elements of the project that are helping us to get to the finish line with all this work. I don't want to repeat everything that's in the memo, but just for anybody who's not on the commission. Back in early August, you had your first meeting and you began to talk about Article 12, which is the environmental protection standards. And. The meeting since then, you were looking at how you would deal with the development side of the equation. This begins to bring the two back together. This is not a review specifically of all the exact standards in Article 12, but it is trying to help meld together how the two would work to in unison. So how would these environmental protection standards apply in a subdivision? How would they apply in the different kinds of planning development? How would they apply when there is no subdivision of land like a site plan or just, you know, somebody has a piece of land and they want to. Build a house on it and there's no site plan at all, so. Objectives for tonight are to, on this agenda item, are to get your feedback. There's a couple of different options, especially around conservation PUDs. Get your sense as to whether we're on the right track and if there's either decisions that you're ready to make or there's information that you feel that you need in order to make a decision. On any of these pieces, then we can do that tonight. So Jessica, how would you like to go through this?
You know, it feels like it might make sense to go in order of. How we read it in the packet, you know, it was really nicely laid out and that's kind of the way we've read it individually.
Excuse me, I'm sorry for cutting in. This is Mark Abrams. I wanted to, did I miss the. Windows for the public input that's not on the agenda?
You have. Would it be okay if we went back to that? Nods, if that's okay? Okay, I'm seeing some positive feedback.
Is this, Mark, is this what you talked about at the council meeting?
It is, and I understand. Some of the, some of the neighbors. Wanted to attend as well and, and just. Give, give some input as I noticed that it was not on tonight's agenda. And. Since I set it in motion in April, it was lost administratively and. There's urgency because, as I mentioned, the. Two projects on Highland Terrace have started with city green screening. Destroyed and. A number of us are quite concerned and just wanted to. To that on the record tonight. Did, did everybody get the copy of? My proposed statute to grandfather in long existing neighborhood character?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question, Jessica?
Sure, Monica.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just, I needed some clarity from, from Paul really on, on understanding this request. If something is already in motion, what is the planning commission's? Responsibility or role in this? If it's already something that has begun, what, what is the planning commission? Are we just to listen to this? Or is there in fact an action that, that we could take on this? Because it's, I'm not clear on that.
When you say in motion, do you mean there are approvals and something is begun? Is that what you, is that what you mean?
That's what I'm understanding, yeah.
So in terms of any projects that have, that are underway, once a preliminary plaque has been submitted to the Development Review Board, the applicant has a right under Vermont law to proceed under those regulations. So any project that has passed that stage. Can, can proceed and is under those rules in effect at that time. Obviously barring interim zoning, but well, no, actually that includes interim zoning, so. So in terms of the projects that have reached there or passed there. Under Vermont law, they have the right to proceed. There's no, there's no action that the planning commission can do to go backwards with something like that. You can obviously look forward, but not backwards.
I approached city council on it and was advised, I'm requesting that it be halted. My understanding is from city input that construction on at least one of the two. Developments. Had, had not received state clearance for digging wells. And I'm concerned about the aquifer, I'm concerned about. The holes in Highland Terrace, the loss of. The scientifically well-established value aesthetically, psychologically, physically and financially of the green screening. Referred to in research as. Well, this term. But, and if people want to. So there's only some. No construction has started, just some below ground work and.
Right, but Mark, just to be clear, and I, you know, I hear your concerns, but. Once a project has begun in the Development Review Board, and this is past that, this has its approvals, the applicant under Vermont law has the right to proceed under any of our, under those rules in at the time. The city doesn't have the authority under Vermont law to halt its own approvals once it's reached that stage.
The city council, did the city council want to give the planning commission specific direction on this? Was he, is that what he was informed?
I was informed, they, yes, go ahead, Paul. You told me.
Well, my interpretation was that the council, that Mr. Abrams concern. Related to the two projects underway, but also more generally to the future of the neighborhood. And so I think when the council recommended that, that he speak with the planning commission, it was likely in the light of the planning commission is the body that looks at the future of a neighborhood. So. Potential future projects that have not yet materialized.
So I'm sorry to hog the mic here. My, my, so my interpretation of reading this, I do wonder if his letter is appropriate not, since we can't do anything about the projects that are already underway. If it really comes down to, for example, building type selections to maintain the character of an established neighborhood, that fits in some of the PUD work that we're doing, but just to be clear, that, that's future work. And it sounds like there's nothing about current or past that we can talk about. So I just wanted to. See if that helps clarify.
I would, I would request review. And. If it, if the three houses behind one go in, the two houses behind another. I'd request that if it, if it must go forward, that access to those homes. Follow precedent already on Heinsberg Road and enter from Heinsberg Road and not have, not have that much more traffic, arguably five to 10, five, seven average more cars. In front of my everyday workspace. And I'd like to see, I'd like to request if that goes forward for these two projects, which. I started addressing to the DRB last October and brought an expert witness, international expert witness on the built environment. Ian, who gave them input. I wasn't here some of these. Things until now, but I very much. And my neighbors as well. Strongly request you consider the whole proposal, yes, going forward for the future. The street has been significantly altered. As I say, not without good neighbors. But it's no justification to degrade the character for the long established people who've been used to it for, in my case, almost 40 years. So. What would you suggest about? The possibility of mandating? That if they want to develop. Sure, okay. Let the new residents enter from Heinsberg Road. I'd been on it, as I say, 39 years using both north and south exits. And to my knowledge, I know of no accidents. From those points. And these, these properties themselves have actually. Even more lead, visual lead time to Heinsberg Road from traffic coming from the hill on the south than the existing one on the south. So that's, that's a whole thing, but I do request that at your earliest opportunity, you give the proposal and its many interlocking components primarily motivated by. Asking for the fairness that the city accords to developers in terms of predictability. For. Long-term residents. Now, you put tremendous work and. Attention and energy into all the planning. And there's a lot of moving pieces. I don't envy you, but I admire you. But I have to say that. I think that a certain human element, certain consideration for the many impacts. On people who bought in expecting, expecting predictability. And are kind of blindsided as opposed to today's buyer who can see mixed. Take their choice on mixed developments. It seems very unfair and I thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. And we do have your submitted information as well. And you, you're unfortunately not on the agenda tonight, so I don't think we can do a lot more discussion about it tonight, but I think you've really made your case really well.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
He's gone, but we do have a procedure for, for new requirement to, to consider new LDRs. And I think we need to stick to that.
Yeah, I agree, which is why, you know, we, we heard, we've heard what he has, we've heard.
I'm, I'm still here. I missed what you said, Mr. Mitek.
Yes, Sam, I mean, Mark, yeah, we, we, and I was going to add to that, what, I didn't know you, you, I thought you'd left, I was going to add to that, that we have a huge volume of work to do. Particularly with the pressure from interim zoning, the interim zoning period, which may end in November or be extended a bit, but. We, we have a process where we, by which we take on new projects and we, we do it on a, on a periodic basis. Because your, your proposal is a, is a new statute, if I read your letter correctly.
Yes, I was advised by, by city council and I thought city planner that. Just going along that city council wants to hear your opinion before any consideration. So I was just going along with, along those lines. You will see in the proposal also in terms of interim zoning. I feel reading, reading all the, all the content. That, that the clearance, the waiver for these two projects do not meet the criteria of health, welfare and a few other points that the city seems to mandate for that. So that's, that's not for tonight, but I want to mention that.
Yeah, so Mark, I can follow up with Helen and see if she has specific guidance, but you know, for our next few meetings, we have a specific agenda that's been set by the city council with, they've given us priorities on what to work on in the next short bit here, so. But I will follow.
Yeah, I would be keeping his information in mind when we go through our infill information, our infill PUD, so I think there's very beneficial information here for infill PUD work.
Thank you, Monica.
Okay, I. Listening to last, the last meeting, a number of the points caught my attention about not wanting to just drop in more density. I don't, I don't understand all the context the way you do, not just plopping something in and so forth, so I'll be reviewing that. But anyway, okay, I appreciate giving me a hearing here.
Okay, well, thank you, Mark. So Paul, we'll go back to that item one on the. Packet there.
Okay, great. And Paul Engels has arrived, so welcome, Paul. So as we were just getting started here. Jessica, you wanted to go through the packet item in the order in which it was presented, so the first one up here is site plans and zoning permits. So these are things that do not involve any division of land. So essentially, and this is the most straightforward one, the standards in Article 12 and Article 10, excuse me, apply as they are. In those cases, it's fairly straightforward, so if you have a wetland, then you've, then you have to move around your wetland. If you are looking to impact the buffer of your wetland, then Article 12 contains the standards that will, that the DRB and in case of wetlands, the state would review and consider whether to grant any kind of impacts, but. And the same goes all the way through the, all the way through all them. The one thing that we've done in this, this year's draft. It's a little bit different from the past is try to give a little bit more specific guidance as to what, what you need to present upfront if you happen to be a multi-stage application to the Development Review Board versus what needs to be done before you get your final approval. That's been a question in the past and this helps to. Let applicants know what they need to be submitting for something like a wetland, they're probably going to jump straight to the field verification, but at least it gives them an indicator at the beginning. Just as a matter of text here, anything that's in italics is new under these proposed regulations, so various deep slopes. Rare, threatened and endangered, which is what RTE stands for, the habitat blocks, the habitat connectors. And the habitat edge, which we'll talk about a little bit more in a minute.
Well.
Any questions on any of this?
Yes. You kind of jumped ahead on the, on your first page, level one and level two resources are typically rooted in local policy priorities. They are not typically hazardous. Well, I'm not sure that that's necessarily correct. They could be hazardous to natural communities and to the health and welfare of local residents. They might have, you know, and, and might not be in any way mitigating. If they're built on, the, the opportunity to mitigate for climate change would be lost. So I'm not sure that, that you can state that they're not hazardous. And then you.
That's a fair point, Michael, and if, as I, as I indicated in there, if, if a different title would be better, then we're happy to do that. These, the purpose of these ones are, these per consultant and per our initial legal review are generally things which across the country have a longstanding acceptance for being things that are either perilous to build on or accepted that they cannot be built on by state and federal rules. That's really what that's trying to say. Whereas the other ones are policy priorities and bring with them a little bit more challenge in terms of making sure that there's not a regulatory takings happening. That's really the difference between these two. It's a, it's a local priority. And I'm not trying to discount it in any way, shape or form as to how important they are. But in terms of how they get treated under the law, it's a little bit different.
Okay, and then. The decision to merge level one and level two, if I'm. If I'm understanding that correctly. I'm not quite sure why that happened and is it really the right way to go? Because having both as separate categories. Differentiated allows for a more nuanced approach to us and, and moving. Resources from one level to another. We've. I know we only had two before, primary and secondary, but. I'm not sure why we did this. Is it because of? Because they all fit under one heading or is there another reason for doing it?
Well, in speaking with our consultant, in, in a classic version of some of this, the lowest level ones, which in this case are level two, are more aspirational in the sense of they're not necessarily regulated but for being in a conservation PUD. And a city decides when to, where physically to put a, a conservation PUD. In this case. The feedback that we'd received from the commission was that all of these resources are important to be regulated regardless of their environment. So in that first example of a, just a house on a property where there is no subdivision, there is no PUD, that the commission still wanted to see those, those resources regulated. So they all elevate a little bit. We do still have a level one and a level two, and we can talk about the distinction in terms of how they get calculated for density. When I said that they're a little less significant, the, the main reason I said that is because you've moved to a, a system that relies less on underlying density. There are still some differences and we can discuss it. And I'm happy to present it however is most clear to the public ultimately.
Paul, is that, is that the intention of tonight's? Conversation though, or is that specifically related to Article 12? Because I completely agree with Michael and I do think that it reduces the importance of some of the very important things that are in here by combining them, but it seems to me like that may not matter as much for tonight's conversation, am I, is that right?
Well, I think that the, the output that we want to get tonight is exactly what the functionality in a subdivision in a PUD of these different resources are. And instead of calling it a level one or a level two, I'll call them by their names of a forest block or a intermittent stream or, or whatever. And wherever the cutoff is between them in terms of how they get treated differently, that becomes the level one versus level twos, because ultimately they all get regulated in Article 12 regardless. So the levels are only important when we talk about subdivisions and PUDs and how they get treated differently in those circumstances.
Great, Ted, you had your.
I mean, procedurally, we've got this, this agenda and this memo, which we've all, possibly all read and made notes and comments along the way. Isn't that the feedback that you want, Paul? And isn't that the way we should do it? Okay. Enough on that. Where are we on this memo now?
I think we're still in section one and Ted had his hand up.
No, very quickly, I know in the note, in the memo, Paul was looking for terminology and I was just going to throw out that maybe we should use the word fragile as opposed to hazards, but that's just a thought. I don't know if you want to, I don't want to spend half an hour coming up with names, but that was just something that I.
I think we should stick with hazards because that's the. For lack of a better term, universally recognized terminology. So it's what's used in, in regulation and what's used in other states. And so I would rather stick with something that's been kind of legally vetted and, you know, is a standard than try to craft some other word that essentially means the same thing. I mean, to me, it's pretty clear, you know, the hazards are, you know, and it says right in the sentence, dangers, you know, to flooding and, and things like that. So they're, you know, it's to me, pretty definitive what that means and. I'm personally not in favor of trying to word craft something else around something that's already an industry standard.
And if I'm not mistaken, hazards, hazards are largely regulated by other entities, the state and others.
Right.
So I'm not arguing with that.
Blood zones, hazards, like that.
Yeah, so, so it seems like maybe it's not the perfect word, but we're generally okay with using it.
I think it's a pretty good word.
I agree with Bernie, and I would just ask that we do split up level one to level two.
Okay.
Do that now or later, but I, I would like to see them separated.
Yeah, I think ultimately we're going to end up maybe with a different approach for level two than we'll end up with for level one. That's my gut feel at this point.
I have a question about the field verification column there. When it has a yes, does that mean it's required or it's allowed? I have a question about the field verification column there. When it has a yes, does that mean it's required or it's allowed?
Let me scroll down there, just so that I'm following what Michael said. Does anybody have any questions about the bottom of page one here regarding forest habitats, my note there?
Um, no.
No, I'm good. And that's what we had talked about was kind of breaking those up some way.
So, um,
Okay.
Right. So Jessica, the yes means that it is required to, to do a field verification of those if you're going to be, I guess, if you're going to be anywhere near them. And I, and I guess in terms of calculating, if you, if you're going to be using it for density, you're going to need to field verify it as well.
Yeah, I guess maybe we can just have an offline conversation about it too, but the floodway and the river corridor and the, are, it's like a specific line created by that government entity and that's basically where it is. Like a, the line
FEMA firm map, yeah.
Yeah, the FEMA firm map is for the floodway itself is not negotiable. It's not based on an elevation. It's based on where they drew it on the map and then that's the line.
Yeah, although you can, I think there is a mechanism to work with that, but it's something that's, you know, the developer would have
The river corridor is a little bit of both. Right. Okay. We, we can have an offline conversation about that. The river corridor is a little bit of both. There are some that are mapped and there are some that are the obligation of an applicant to demonstrate exactly where it is when it's less than a two acre watershed as a reach or as I recall.
It is true. Then it's based off of the location of the river itself. So, yeah. Um, Michael, you have your
Yes, I, I looked at a FEMA map of the flood, floodplains for South Burlington and there is a 0.2% floodplain that goes, it starts in the, in the golf course and runs south between Dorset Street and the Great Swamp. And that's a 500-year floodplain or a 0.2% floodplain. And that's, I think, what we should have in here because it's, it's more resilient and provides, provides more safety for residents who would be living on either side of it. So I don't know where, where the
Well, Michael, right now
But I can send it to you.
It's in the level two list right now. Are you saying
I think it should be in the level one. It should be in the hazards.
I think the hundred-year flood is in the hazard, in the, in the 500-year flood is in the level one and level two, right?
Yes, I think the 500-year flood should
Um, so currently the 500-year floodplain has limited restrictions on it in our regulations. As I recall, the only restriction is the critical facilities cannot be placed in them and then you define what critical facilities are. So that's the only restriction that exists to the 500-year floodplanes. So that's something if you, if the commission wants to go to do more, then we can certainly take a look at that. But the only restriction is not being able to put critical facilities, which are essentially jails, hospitals. I think daycare facilities might be in there, certain, but, but that's it.
Paul, do you know how neighboring towns treat that, like Shelburne and Burlington? Do they
I don't off the top of my head, but I can reach out to the state floodplain coordinator and find out. The first step that communities do is they require a greater, a greater elevation above the, the 100-year floodplain as the action. So instead of saying that buildings need to be elevated two feet if they allow anything in it that they need, sorry, one foot, then it becomes two feet. We, we have very, very restrictive rules for our floodplain. But we could look at, I think infrastructure only has to be one foot above there. It could be modified to be two feet. But if commissioners would like, I'd be happy to reach out and find out what other communities are doing around the 500.
And how many times has it been an issue over the last, you know, 50 years? Which, have there been any recent incidences?
There have in other communities. There's, there's been, you know, in Irene, for a lot of communities in the state, it was close to a 500-year flood. We didn't get the same amount of rain here in our city that other locations did. So, you know, it's all based on probability. So, I mean, it could happen tomorrow or it could never happen in our lifetime.
And it could happen five years in a row.
Yeah.
So it's an issue to be considered, right?
We've only had one, a couple of years ago, which took out the bridge down there that I think qualified as a 500-year flood. But there's nothing to stop us from adding to the, to the, to the regulations are about 500-year floodplanes. If they're too limited for us, we don't want people to build in a 500-year floodplain like they've done in Houston.
I'd be interested in knowing, and maybe Paul, this is something you can come up with, is just what the, the mapped difference is between the 100 and the 500. I imagine it completely depends on the stream and what the bank height is and all the other stuff. But it would be interesting to know what impact, you know, going from 100 to 500 is under the hazard. Secondly, and I, I, I understand where Michael's getting at, and that's with, you know, it seems like the greater frequency of extreme rain events, you know, the, the 500-year, you know, may become more prevalent. And maybe it's a proactive approach to deal with that now as opposed to later. So I kind of get that. And, but it would be interesting to see what the, you know, what the difference is. You know, what, what impact that has on what we have remaining to develop and, and use that to inform our decision. But like I said, I certainly get that we're having a lot more high intensity storms and it might be better to be proactive and address that now. So.
So I'm seeing some head on in here. Would commissioners like me to come back at your next meeting with some mapping of that, some description of what other communities have done in their 500-year floodplain? I can reach out to the state floodplain coordinator. I suspect that there will be a couple of options for you. As with 100-year floodplanes, you could choose to require certain flood protections or you could potentially go further and save it and limit development altogether.
Yeah, that would be worthwhile. And, and you know, maybe it's under, you know, maybe you end up regulating it under some kind of protection where it's got to, you know, be built, you know, a certain height above the, the floodplain or have, you know, waterproof first story or, you know, I mean, there's FEMA mitigation approaches for building, you know, where you have high water. But I, I would certainly, so to answer your question personally, I would love to see what you just talked about.
Yep.
I see at least four heads nodding, so I'll, I'll proceed to do that.
Yeah, you know, we just need to play it safe rather than stick with what's there because it's there.
Yeah, like I said, it's maybe an opportunity to be proactive to, you know, future frequent high intensity events. So.
Okay, great. Anything else on this section one, which is really about the site plans?
Well, the only thing was Monica's point about separating one and two.
I'm sorry. Michael, go ahead. You were
The only thing, the only other thing I noted on that was Monica's comment that we should separate level one and level two.
Yeah, and we agreed to do that.
Yes.
Thanks.
All right, moving forward here. So now we're going to get to the next, the next stage here where we talk about subdivisions and the two development oriented PUD types, for lack of a better word here. So the TNDs and the NCDs, traditional neighborhoods and neighborhood commercial areas. So just a reminder, standards do apply from Article 10 and 12. Newly created lots, this is where we begin to separate out between the level ones and the level twos. So as drafted, newly created lots would be arranged to exclude hazards and forested habitat areas, which in this case would be the level one. So that's, that's where the level ones become different. They become excluded from the calculation of buildable area. And so your buildable area becomes the remainder after that. And we'll talk about how level twos fit into that. And depending on whether we're talking about a standard subdivision or a PUD, the buildable area is the area from which you start working in terms of your actual development. So that would, you would have to put your roads in there. You'd have to put your civic slash park space in there and then the remainder can be the development. In a, and I'll, I'll talk about sort of the quirks of it in a moment here, but this table here tries to break, tries to break this all down. So building lot restrictions, again, that means that for the most part, with, with a few small exceptions, anything that says a yes in the building lot restrictions means that those resources have to be on their own separate lots. They can't be incorporated into a newly created lot for a house. There's some minor exceptions where if it's, you know, just to the very edge of something that you can, but otherwise generally no. The ones that say no in that category can be incorporated into a lot as long as they're smaller than the minimum lot size. So typically the things that are in there and we, you know, we'll revisit this floodplain one, but the other ones typically they're physically quite small. And so they are, they, they don't really change the developability of a parcel. If there's an intermittent stream, you have to avoid it, but it doesn't mean it can't be in a backyard. In the instance where it was quite large, if it does come up, we can talk about that in a PUD, but basically in a PUD, if it happens to be larger than that, or even in a straight subdivision, it, it winds up having to be its own lot anyway. And it'll have to come out of one of the categories of development. So you would, in a TND, it would come out of your unallocated in that case. You just, you're, you're sort of stuck that you have to put it there. Buildable area. So this is, does it count towards what's your, your buildable area here? So where you, what, what, as I said a minute ago, your starting point, it mirrors the, the building lot restrictions. So, so when you talk about, let's say, density or you talk about your, your building type allocations, it's the, the, the things that are no's under building, building areas are off the list. You start after that. And then in terms of field verification and initial identification, it's the same. We can talk a little bit more specifically in Article 12 about where it says HDA optional for the forest blocks. The one that says had is a typo. It should say HDA. That's the ability in Article 12 to seek a modification to the mapped one. If you want to, or you can just accept the map.
Paul, just a quick
Questions in here.
Yeah, just a quick question, Paul. It, it seems like last time, or maybe a couple of meetings ago, and, and I think Monica maybe suggested it, I could be wrong. Is under the level two resources that, that we were looking at, you know, certainly the habitat block core areas being a yes for restriction. But the, the edge areas maybe not being, that we were going to try to differentiate how we use the, the cores versus the, the edges.
So a couple of thoughts on that, Bernie. One is there's certainly the ability in the next chart to talk about which ones you prioritize. Here, I guess I didn't want to change this yet until you've had your next item conversation, which is are there areas that you want to exclude or include from the applicability altogether?
Okay, that's fair.
Because otherwise, i- in a, in a straight subdivision or a TND, if you say that the habitat block edge can be in the buildable area, then I think what you're saying is that you can put homes sort of in and around the edge of the forest, which might work, but then you'd have to have some standards that said what the rest of their parcel needs to look like. So you start sort of having homes in the forest in that case, as opposed to if in the next item, you decide that a certain area just shouldn't be applicable, then you're drawing a more clean line between this is forest, this is development.
Okay, fair enough.
Maybe we should change, not call that a habitat block edge, but have a habitat block buffer so that you don't have buildings right up against the trees of the core forest block. So that there's, there's a buffer around. I believe if I'm not mistaken, that applies, for example, to the forests here down on Spear Street and, and Swift, the Edland Forest. There's a theme of terminology that there's a buffer of, I don't, I can't remember the size, but that might be a way to avoid the problem that Paul has just mentioned of having housing smack up against, against the forest. Have a buffer.
I think that you'll find that when we look at the map of these, the way that Arrow would prepare these is they drew what I'm calling the edge, but the terminology is probably not the, the correct one. They, they drew it by exclusion. So the, the, the core areas are 300 feet from inwards from the outer point of the mapped forest. So the edge represents those 300 feet. And I think you'll see that in some cases, they're, they're 300 feet adjacent to development. But in some cases, they're 300 feet adjacent to the interstate right of way. And that's probably not the same thing in terms of their habitat functions. So we probably need to refine that a little bit. And, and I've been, I think we need to find a better term than edge because I think the, one of the committee meetings that I was at, I think it was affordable housing. There was some confusion that folks are saying, well, habitat edge is good for certain species. This isn't edge in the sense of a species. It just really means 300 feet from the middle of it.
Yeah. Monica, you're on mute.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that it's really hard to do this before we get into those kinds of details because when we do look at the map, there's going to be some areas where the edge, as Arrow would defined it on the map, are obviously important. And there are some other edges and perhaps even parts of core that we might look at and say, you know, looking big picture, let's question some of those and discuss it. So I just think that's going to be a very important step for us to go into great detail on. And it sounds like that's not happening in this meeting. So.
I think it'll start in the next agenda item, Monica. I think for here, I wanted to put the placeholder in that you could think about them somewhat differently, especially in the conservation PUDs, which is up next.
Yeah. And the reason that this is first on the agenda, Monica, was because I felt like we weren't all completely clear on kind of how those different areas would actually work in the PUD. So I felt like we needed a better feeling for the structure before we could say, oh yeah, no, we don't regulated that way. Or, you know, so it's, it's hard to know what to talk about first, you know, like Bernie pointed out, but it's, we had to pick one.
So maybe then we just, we just agree to come back and revisit the no in the buildable area column or habitat block edge.
Well, and that leads to kind of a secondary concern and discussion I have around these whole habitat blocks and forests and edges. And that's, you know, native species versus invasive species, which, you know, you might, you know, want to take out, you know. So, you know, I don't know if when Arrow would do their study, whether they differentiated between. between, you know, native and invasive or not. So that's certainly something I would, you know, I don't want to regulate 300 feet of, you know, buckthorn or honeysuckle or something that's, you know, invasive, and, you know, the last project I did, we paid the contractor to, you know, essentially exterminate the invasives, and so, you know, regulate them, you know, makes no sense. So I think we just need to be cognizant of that as we look at those blocks that have been defined, so. And that maybe falls into the field verification, you know, maybe we have language that, you know, the developer goes out and looks at it, and if they come back and tell us that it's all invasives, we're going to say, okay, you know, you can go X amount further. So, anyway, not to get off tangent, but.
Bernie, are you saying that the field verification would be done by a developer?
Um, I don't know.
Well, as drafted, and you can, you know, this is yours to write, but as drafted, the field verification wouldn't be about determining whether the line is where it is, it would be somebody applying to either relocate a portion of the habitat to somewhere else by demonstrating that it's lower quality and that they can do something else, or have a, basically a mitigation of buyout for a piece of that after demonstrating that it's lower quality. But in both cases, they would have to demonstrate that the habitat functions of the block are retained.
Okay.
It's not a verification per se, it's a opportunity to mitigate.
But wouldn't we want to, and maybe not, but maybe have a verification? I mean, I'm kind of concerned about the whole invasives. You know, as you wander around, I mean, there's a lot of nice green, but a lot of it is not native, so.
The way we drafted it was it's optional to do, as we discussed, by an applicant. The challenge with all of this is that this is a policy-based tool, it's not as grounded in, say, federal law as wetlands delineations are, and so it's, the opportunity for two wildlife experts to disagree as to where the line should be is very high. And so, you know, I think in here, it's written more like how the city drew the boundary at the NRP, which is a policy-based line that is rooted in science, but is not necessarily trying to determine which is the last tree in the habitat. But, you know, as you look, as when we come back in a meeting or two with Article 12, you can have that debate, this is yours to, this is your policy document to make.
Yeah.
Can I add to that?
Go back to the invasive stuff, and I know the state has like a list of, you know, what's invasive, so, I mean, it would seem like having some mechanism for somebody to say, you know, it's a nice city that you drew the line, but we think that, you know, 200 feet of this is invasive, and we can prove it. You know, I guess I feel like there should be an opportunity to do that.
Can I just say, I would agree, and I would add to that, the, anything that is estimated, like I believe the wetlands class two is estimated in our map. Is that right, Paul?
That's estimated, yes, so that would always be a field verification.
Yeah, anything that's estimated, or was a policy-driven decision based on Arrow Wood's report, which we've accepted, but they themselves said they didn't actually go onto every property and look very specifically at what is there, that, you know, if a landowner goes through that, a verification process and actually can demonstrate that what the map is showing is actually not accurate, I don't think they should have to buy out or mitigate, you know, for something else. If there is something there, but they want to make the case to alter it or to move it, that's another thing. But I think that they should have the right to go through a verification process, and we have to decide who would we trust to do that, right? But if they go through a verification process and show that in fact some of the things that the maps are estimating, or that were, you know, they should have the right to do that, and if they are correct, they shouldn't have to buy out or make an alternate plan.
Yes, in short, I agree.
Can do that. I guess I just want to be very careful and mindful that where there is lack of clarity, that the applicant has the right to proceed. So with wetlands, for instance, there is long-established science on the functions and values, and it's been litigated left, right, up, down, it's very settled sort of science essentially at this point. This, if the opportunity is made to do this, then a development review board would have to have very, very clear standards as to exactly what is the edge of the habitat and what is not, because anything that's vague on that would be considered unconstitutional. So that's, that's why we wrote the default as being, the default is that the line is where the line is, that it's a policy-based line, that you drew like the NRP, and gave an opportunity to mitigate. But, so I just want, as you think about that, we can do some research into it, but that's the challenge with this.
You know, and in just talking with community members and really diving into this, if it remains policy-based like this, and it says this is the line, period, then I do think that during this development process, I know we're going to have public hearings on this, but I would support having, especially for landowners who have this on their parcel, working out some kind of, like, here is your chance to present your challenge to this map to the planning commission before we do lock in the policy line, and they can either take us up on that opportunity or not, and perhaps they provide something in writing that becomes part of an agenda pack, so it's an official public document that anyone can look at, and maybe we have to have some specific agenda time geared towards that to give the landowners that chance. I mean, that's the piece, and if they don't want to take us up on it, that's their choice. But a direct communication out to them saying, here's the proposed map, and you have until this date to give your feedback on it before it becomes policy, just, I don't know, offer.
Yeah, that's one approach. The other approach is to do it, you know, to write it and then have them have to do it, you know, during, you know, their submittal process, you know, for a development. And I think there's pluses and minuses to both, but I think we're kind of agreeing that, you know, just having some kind of, you know, policy line that, you know, may or may not be accurate, you know, provides its own opportunity for people to, you know, have, you know, negative input on that. And so I think it would be good to have some opportunity for them to work on that. I'm wondering, Paul, you know, like with wetlands, you know, in addition to the fact that it's, you know, well-established science, there's all guidance documents on it, and I'm wondering whether, and this is a little outside the box, I guess, but whether, you know, other communities have drafted like a guidance document or a procedures manual, or whether that's something that Arrow Wood could do, because I agree with you, Paul, from the perspective that, you know, we've got to have something that's legibly defensible and definable. But I also agree with Monica that, you know, having people have some opportunity to have input onto where the line is, and whether it's mitigatable or not, would be good too. So, you know, I guess I'm wondering if, you know, I mean, we have, you know, we have guidance manuals on stormwater and wetlands, and all kinds of things. I'm wondering if, you know, maybe if we adopt this, if we can put together, you know, a procedures manual, that, you know, we want to see these, you know, eight items addressed, and these are the things that we will allow you to say, and these are the things that we won't. And, you know, maybe we get some input, you know, on the guidance manual from the stakeholders, and, you know, then they agree on the guidance manual. I don't know, anyway.
Well, and I would just add, I do think it's better that the planning commission try to tackle this rather than loosely sending it to the DRB per development. It just feels like if we can find a way to tackle this here and make it part of the policy, it'll be much more, a much stronger argument, and it will be easier for the DRB to keep things, you know, moving smoothly.
Right, and we can make it part of the policy, but if part of the policy was, you know, we're going to provide you with a guidance manual on how to write up your report to present to the DRB, you know, that would accomplish that, I think.
Well, you know, I think this is probably a discussion to continue during the next piece when we look at the mapping, but I'm in favor of writing it similar to how it is now, where we have a line, they can move things around on the property, but, you know, there's not a super great procedure in place that people are using, so it's, you know, if we had a line that was the line, you know, I think that's probably the most legally defensible. But we can keep talking about it as well.
I would agree with that, if the line was scientifically put in to begin with, but Arrow Wood was pretty clear that a lot of the line was done by a windshield survey, so, you know, that's the issue I have.
I would agree with you, Bernie. I think there's a lot of trepidation about that, the city LDR map about the forest blocks, and I think that if we can try to address that ahead of time, I think that we could hopefully, you know, resolve some issues that otherwise would come up in front of the DRB.
We need to have a solid background and justification as we can for whatever we come up with for, you know, the line or the regulation or whatever, because you're right, it is a, and an issue that's of concern to everybody on both sides of the equation, and, you know, we're going to have to address it eventually, so I think, you know, making our best stab at it now is worthwhile.
And maybe it's a, maybe there's two different things here. Maybe it's if the line that we're putting down, the policy line we're putting down, you know, the landowner who knows.
Listening again to another meeting. Oh my God.
Hello? That if the line that we put down as policy is, if a landowner wants to challenge the fact of that, their chance to do that is now, and if they don't, they have a second chance, which is to do what we've said, which is that at the time of development, you can request the two different paths of the mitigation or, but the chance to completely alter it is now during the policy era phase, and then after we get past that, there's still the second chance, which would be, you know, to compensate in a different way like we've set up here.
Something to chew on.
Some options to drop. Could Vince Bolduc add something here? I'm sorry I'm not on the screen, but I think I'm audio connected. I agree, may I? Thank you. I agree with the direction of this conversation and the comments made by Bernie and Monica, and kind of a two-step process would be, it would be very, very helpful. On the open space committee, several times we were reminded about how fast the, some of these lines change, including on, you know, forest blocks. Just a few years ago, they were here, and now they're there, and this is partly, as Bernie emphasized, because of these darn invasive species, the buckthorn and the honeysuckle, which look green from the air, but they're actually a hazard, we learned on that committee, oftentimes a hazard to some very important animal life, birds in particular, and the Audubon Society would like to get rid of some of these invasive species. Now, since the line is a moving target, and, you know, I have an aerial photograph of the Southeast quadrant taken about 30 years ago, and if you look at it today, it's stunning to see how some of these lines have moved, and the planning commission, making, you know, plans for at least 10 years, should remember that in 10 years, some of these things could look quite different. And if we're planning for more than 10 years, then the lines of forest blocks identified by the Arrowhead study, it really could be different in a little while. So somehow we need at least a one or a two-step process to recognize that some of these lines are very soft, and homeowners, by the way, may not recognize what these lines are on their property, homeowners or potential developers without real, serious field research. So I like any effort made to leave open the passage of time as we see the natural environment evolve. So, thank you.
Well, are invasives the natural environment or the unnatural environment? I mean, this is, invasive have perhaps destroyed what some years ago, or many years ago, as Vince says, were forests. I don't know whether we should, I'm not sure how we can draw these lines if they get changing all the time as Vince suggests. I think we just have to take a current, take what we've got now and use it, going back to try and find out where the lines might have been, and going forward to where they might be in the future is pretty much futile, and just, I think we need to work with what we've got now.
Yeah, and I think that's what we're kind of talking about, is talking about the lines, but I think what Monica and I are talking about is some kind of study or verification to go along with that, so that the developer
I'd disagree with that.
has the opportunity to say, yeah, you drew the line here, but, you know, there's 200 feet of buckthorn that, you know, really shouldn't be counted, and here's my, you know, scientifically defensible proof of that, and so I want to develop where the buckthorn is, and, you know, that there's a mechanism to be able to do that. Conversely, if it is really all good, high-quality stuff, the language on mitigation and things would be applicable. So, you know, I'm not advocating doing away with the lines, I'm advocating for, you know, the opportunity to do some kind of verification to make sure that, you know, over the course of five years, that, you know, 300 feet of buckthorn hasn't grown in somewhere.
Well, and I'm sorry, if I can add to that, too, that we might know from the mapping that there are some areas of the forest block and of the habitat block that are, because of where they are, even if right now it has been overrun by buckthorn, that location is obviously still critical to corridors and other connections, and so I don't think it's just limited to if it's buckthorn, then remove it from, but, you know, having plans in place to help people remove invasives, to let a reforestation happen in a location that it should be, it would be really helpful, so.
So we're a little off agenda order with our habitat block discussion here, but I do think it's a good one, and I think we're going to have to come back to it, and when we do, we probably need to also think about, you know, how it changes if people change things by themselves, like if somebody goes in and cuts down all their trees, and then they have somebody come and say there's no trees there, so it's no longer forested habitat, like, you know, I think it's a more complicated discussion, that it might help to, you know, be looking at the mapping and really thinking about it kind of all at once.
Yeah.
Which I think we'll have an opportunity to kind of get back to it a little later in the agenda here, so.
Yeah, and I think it's definitely something to chew on. I mean, there's been some good discussion and some good talk here, and, you know, I think the bottom line is, is that it sounds like there's concern with, you know, Arrow Wood's mapping and, you know, the degree of, you know, scientific verification that went into that, and are there things that we can do to improve it? And. And that's what we need, that's what we need to chew on.
Okay, okay. So back to this.
Did you renew someone?
No, I, I think we're here.
I just muted myself, so I wouldn't echo.
Okay, so we're looking at the chart for the, um, PUDs here.
Do you have any more questions on this one? Or can we, would you like to move towards the conservation PUDs, where the sort of the, the heart of this conversation really comes together?
No, I think I'm good with this.
All right, so the conservation PUDs, let me back up for a quick second here and just say that, um, the history of conservation PUDs, uh, it was sort of put together by a guy by the name Randall Arant. And, and he had come up with this approach years ago with, as a way to deal with areas that a community wanted to prioritize natural resources above other, um, above other goals. So that, so that the idea was to identify areas in the city where conservation is the number one priority, as opposed to areas where development is the number one priority. Here in South Burlington, um, our read has been that the commission wants to prioritize important natural resources regardless of where they are, not to sort of pick area A of the city is where natural resources are important and area B of the city is where they're not important. So we, we sort of developed a bit of a hybrid approach, which is why you've got that Arrowhead study. So in a, in, in the conservation PUD, the Arrowhead study wouldn't necessarily have been needed at the very beginning, although it is actually, I, I think, very helpful as we move forward. The way that a conservation PUD would work is, um, and there's a couple of options here. But broadly speaking, first you knock out the natural, the, the hazards, and then you build up to the amount of the other resources in a priority ranked by the city as to what else you're gonna conserve. That's the sort of underpinning of how a conservation PUD would work. And it stops at a point where there's still economic, um, fair economic return to the property owner. So that's where both of the option one and option two are constructed. And it's a little bit of a hybrid approach. Since you have mapped the forest blocks, one could have done a conservation PUD without the forest blocks being mapped, but the consequence would have, that would have been that in all other areas of the city where you don't have a conservation PUD, you don't have any mapped forest blocks to regulate through a site plan or other things. So that's why we have this sort of hybrid approach to not, to, to deal, to make sure that forest blocks are protected in all environments that you choose to have them protected in. So there's two basic approaches here. The first one is that a minimum percentage of the total area of the property, uh, is conserved as open space. It's all the hazards. And then whatever remaining portion of level one and level two hazards that are needed to meet that minimum percentage. All of that goes into the non-buildable area. The remainder goes into the buildable bucket. Um, you still have to meet the standards of Article 12. But in this case, the DRB would be given some guidance, from lowest priority to highest priority of, in a property that, let's say, had 90% natural resources, and let's say that almost all of that was a level one and level two, it would give the DRB some, some priorities as to which of the, um, resources would be able to be built upon in order to return economic value. So that's where you might choose, say, edge of a habitat versus core of a habitat. Conversely, if a property is less than, has, has resources less than the 70%, um, but for whatever reason they wanted to be, um, a conservation PUD, you could add aspirational things into the list. And that's at the bottom of the chart, things that you don't otherwise regulate, but that you could encourage people to do. So a wider, uh, stream buffer or, um, agricultural soils or other things. Um, so it becomes a little bit incentive-based in that respect. And then we can talk about how density is applied. But I, I first wanted to sort of give these couple of options. I talked with the city attorney and, um, all of the options on the table here are ones that the city attorney felt would be, um, uh, legal approaches for you to take. So there's not, and we can have, if you'd like, an executive session to talk in more detail about the exact, the legal, legal elements of it. But I want to sort of put that out there, that everything in here is, is within the realm of what you have the authority to do.
On that, is it the, uh, how many bullet points you got there? Three, four? On the sixth bullet point, um, couldn't we, you know, if hazards are more than 70%, then couldn't we, uh, A, allow a sufficient transfer of density from conserved level two land to compensate, uh, the, the owner? And if that's not enough, then allow a density from, uh, sufficient transfer of this level one conserved land.
Michael, I missed a little bit of that, would you mind, would you mind repeating?
So if hazards are more than 70%, then A, you could allow a sufficient transfer of density from conserved level two land to compensate. And if they're still, if that doesn't compensate sufficiently, then you could allow a sufficient transfer of density from conserved level one land until, um, until the difference between 70% and the actual, uh, area covered by hazards, which could be 80% or 75% or 85%, that extra, um, you could use the, you could transfer density from level two and then level one if it's not enough.
You mean in terms of density?
Yes, well, or, yes, in terms of.
Yes, so your buildable area would remain the areas that are outside of the hazards, because we wouldn't be permitting somebody to build on the floodplain just because it happens to be a large portion of the property. But you're speaking about allowing for compensation. Okay. Um, certainly, that's in the, that's, those are, those are all options on the table.
And then in the option two, um, instead of, you could just say if the area of hazards is less than 70%, the balance, uh, to be set aside shall be drawn from level one and all level two resources to reach the 70%.
But that's what, that's what option one says, right? I think option one expresses that.
Right, so option one would be, let's say you had, I'm just gonna use round numbers. We don't have a lot of.
Well, the A, B, C.
Yes, A, B, and C, yes. A, B, and C are dealing with density. Option one and option two are dealing with where you can build and where you cannot build.
So instead of, what I was reading to you before is the note, it was the note I made about A, B, and C. Instead of A, B, and C, it was the part where you could, um, allow sufficient density transfer from level two and then from level one if necessary, instead of A, B, and C.
So a D, basically, fourth option.
Yeah, and then, um, and instead of requiring, uh, in option two, instead of those two statements, you could just have, uh, if the area is less than 70%, then the balance.
I think, I think though, Michael, that, that Paul presented us with two different options and we gotta pick one.
Yeah, it sounds like what you mentioned.
Right, and so, and so I'm not sure, I like his option one, so I'm not, you know, so, you know, I mean, if, and maybe everybody doesn't, but if everybody felt that option one was kind of the way we wanted to go, we might work on maybe wordsmithing option one a little bit. But then we don't need to have really a discussion on option two, because we've already picked option one.
Yeah, and then within option one, we would have to pick the A, B, or C, which is how the density.
Or D.
Or D.
Or D.
Or D.
Yeah. It would be helpful to sort of have the discussion about the develop, where development can occur and where it cannot occur, and then to sort of sort out how you want to deal with density.
Right, and so, so I, I like the option one approach on where you can and where you can't.
Yeah.
I like option one, but I would ask, I don't know how many larger parcels we have, but I would ask that as the acres go up though, that maybe it shifts to an 80% rather than a 70% or something. But at the same time, I would exchange for that, that, and this kind of crosses over to the other, but I, I don't know that it can't be, um, building type. And I sent to all of you an example from my family in Norway, um, of a very dense, um, very dense, uh, development, but it's, it's, it really preserves all of the nature around it.
But those were all igloos, Mike.
Sorry.
Those were all igloos.
Yeah. January, that was the summer.
Monica, i- in a scenario of a very large property, wh- what is most likely to happen is, let's say the property is 60% covered in natural resources and 40% not. It's probably beneficial to that applicant to choose, instead of a conservation PUD, to do a TND for that 40%, because you're taking a building-type-based approach. And then the remaining 60% is basically untouched. But it's not a conservation PUD because, and so the, the, the incentive there is they get to take the building-based approach. So I would almost say, thinking about that Norway example that you shared, that entire neighborhood was sort of a TND, and then that's the edge of the TND and the remainder was not touched at all. In some communities, there is a requirement for when you need to be a conservation PUD versus a TND. Um, our consultant and I went back and forth on this, and, and our recommendation is that it's an option to be a conservation PUD. That way, somebody can find their own cutoff point, between which they said, you know what, maybe it makes sense for us to conserve 80% of this property and still be, and, and, and still be a TND for the rest of it, because I can create this great neighborhood that's building-type based. And then in that case, they're just lopping off the, the natural resources altogether as their own conservation lot, but they're not being a conservation PUD. Does that make sense?
Yeah, okay, that's helpful, thank you.
So we, we sort of ran it back and forth and thought there's not really much downside to, to making it optional in the context of South Burlington. So this largely is gonna deal with circumstances where, you know, there's a forest area that is 85% or 95% of a property and how they get fair compensation for that property and, and giving the DRB some guidance as to how to deal with that. Uh, in addition, and this is, this goes in the non-regulatory bucket, if the council wanted to, like, let's say a property was 100% covered in forest areas, you could allow for a conservation PUD and the council could, through non-regulatory means, you know, have discussions of, uh, acquiring the remaining developable portion of that property. You know, and that's where regulatory and non-regulatory tools could conceivably come together.
Do we, so we've heard from some people saying they're interested in option one. Is there general agreement on that approach? Thumbs up or my nods or?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I, I am favorite of it, but it does, it did alarm me, you know, the con, the con about it, which is that the had, the, um, the habitats blocks then, because they're not, if they're not hazards, would be, um, minimized, uh, in protection, right? If, if over 70% was in hazards. And I guess I would just ask that there be some kind of consideration of, um, how to, uh, in those circumstances, enable somebody to look at the, those, um, the habitat blocks to just make sure if there isn't, is there even a part of a hazard that could be combined somehow? I, I, just is there a way to make sure critical parts of a habitat block are still protected?
So, so this is where the, when we go down to the chart in a minute, this is where you have your opportunity to prioritize. And this is, this is pretty key in terms of if somebody happens to be over the 70% uh, or wherever you draw the number, 70 is not locked in stone. But wherever you, wherever you put the number, and then the applicant gets to, um, basically build on a portion of it, you can give the applicant and therefore the DRB direct guidance as to what are the priorities, what's the ranked order in which things are to be, um, first allowed to be impacted. So you might say forested areas within 200 feet of a, of a roadway are the first, except a connector. You know, you, you can write it however you want, so that you can shape the property to make sure that it's not just any 10% or 5% or whatever the number happens to be. It's the 5% that's least valuable. Um, and we took a very initial stab at that, but it obviously needs some text, uh, behind it to, to give it some more.
Paul, when you're, go ahead Duncan.
Quick question, on, on the chart there, when, when level one of the sources, and I see the ranking, the higher the ranking, the more important it is, and the, the more we're gonna leave it alone?
The closer to the number one, the, the more important it is.
And, and that would be the last choice to be disturbed?
Correct, so in this instance, um, you know, I put, I, I, I put these last three in here as sort of, um, just something for you to think about. Aspirationally, if somebody was only at 60% and they wanted to get 10 more percent, those ones, and then, um, intermittent streams and buffers, although realistically, you're just gonna incorporate that into your lot, so you're not likely to get, to, to be moving in that area, you would slowly make your way up the list. Sharon and I talked about how this could be drafted to give the DRB some, also, um, a little bit of contextual guidance here, because, you know, a ranked list works in theory, but in practice, there may be a time when a class three buffer is more important than a, um, forested connector, for some reason. So sort of giving the DRB basically some language that would say that this is the preferential order. However, on a case-by-case base, um, the DRB has some latitude to prioritize one over the other, uh, as demonstrated by, you know, the circumstances of the property.
I, I have a, I have a question about that, or me, or maybe just a comment. I know the habitat core is pretty important, but it feels like without the connectors making the connections, we're kind of losing quite a bit of the importance. So it feels to me like the connectors should probably be number one. But, and, and maybe there's just more specific guidance that we can write in the actual chapter 12 language that would preserve those connections.
I think connectors can be moved and recreated, potentially.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I guess, I mean, um, they could move to a different location on the parcel, but maybe they, just creating the connection itself shouldn't be lost.
Right, they're, they're both.
Have the criteria for these, for the rankings? Is this something that you and Sharon worked, worked up, Paul?
Uh, can you repeat that? I'm sorry, uh, it was jumping around.
The criteria, the criteria for these rankings, one to eight. How did we arrive?
We have a little bit, we have a little bit on the, on the habitat blocks. We don't have all of the criteria, um, in terms of how you would select them. We wanted to get your feedback before we went too much further.
Yeah.
Can I, another thing though, that, um, let's just go back to this floodplain, uh, the 0.2% again. And this is where I, it's helpful, or it's important for me to understand the level one versus the level two. Is I've been thinking about a level two, it is buildable, it just has considerations. So I don't know why that would fit into a ranking, we're just saying.
Right, so. Right, so, so let's take. Right, so, so let's take, I'll, I'll use the class three wetlands and class three wetland buffers as an example here. Class three wetland buffers are, there are times when it is appropriate to allow for impacts there. Uh, class, um, it's usually a, a pretty small feature and DR, the state doesn't regulate them at all. The DRB from time to time does give allowances for development, um, or the backyards to be in there. Um, in this case, if you were trying to come up with your seventy percent, that would, that would come into, uh, into your ranked components of, of, you know, no touch or you can ask the DRB for, for allowance. The floodplain is another good example where the current regulations, the point two percent, only say that critical areas cannot be, uh, critical facilities cannot be installed. However, if you put it as your conservation, then it's your conservation. It enhances its function to have it entirely set aside as conservation.
Makes sense.
If that's the case, I would move the habitat block edge up in ranking because that's not something that can be, ideally, it'd be best to leave it alone, but I would move it below the class three wetlands since they can be built on, wanted to do it with.
You mean above the class three wetlands? Monica, you were saying move it, and move it up or move it, move it up on the, on the scale or move it up in a number?
I would, I would switch, um, ranking, ranks three and four, I would swap those.
Yep. Got it.
And again, these, this is just guidance, the way I understand it is, is, so if they're less than seventy percent, you know, what we're essentially saying is, you know, start with number one and work your way down to get yourself up to seventy percent. And if you're over seventy percent and you need to shave back, you're saying start at number eight and start shaving until you get to seventy percent. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, with also the understanding that Article twelve still applies. So you don't, um, you know, just because, uh, you want to build on the, a class three buffer, you'd still need the DRB's approval to do so.
Right.
Um, the.
That, that falls in with the, the point two floodplanes too, then, that if they, if they wanted, if they ended up wanting to build on it, they would still have to not build critical facilities on it.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
After we go through this exercise, though, it will be interesting going back to Article twelve because maybe there are some of those things that we, we can reconsider. I mean.
Right, well, and I think that, you know, these two things have to, they, they, they sort of work in concert. So, you know, using the habitat blocks because it's sort of the easiest one to talk about here. It, the Article twelve would apply, but the DRB would also be given guidance that, um, as part of this rank order, as you just talked about, uh, Bernie, that some consideration of the fact that we're, that you're allowing for thirty percent of the property to be built on should be part of their consideration. You know, that it shouldn't just be, no, 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 all the way down the line in Article twelve. Therefore, you only get one percent of your land buildable. There is guidance being given them to say that, um, sort of in addition to Article twelve, there are certain, you know, uh, there, there's certain considerations that need to come in as a result of this being a conservation PUD. So let's say, you know, let's say a floodplain, you were to say, um, you know, it's a no build area, but in the con, but in this context, maybe you could build if you met certain flood safety standards. Or, you know, the habitat block edge, maybe the, the edge of it becomes, i- is, is the least valuable area. So you are allowing for, for some development there as long as there's, you know, no lighting, no exterior lighting going on. And you're being sort of sensitive to the fact that you're close to a habitat.
Yep.
Paul, it seems a lot, it seems a lot more clear if we can just be consistent always. I mean, why, why can't there just be these resources that are, don't build, sure you can build, or whether it's Article twelve or here, class three wetlands, always buildable, but you always have.
Monica, the whole reason for the conservation PUD is to address the circumstances of you have more of your land that is a priority conservation area. And you ha, and, and, and you're trying to return some economic value back to that property owner.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, I totally get that. I just mean in terms of, like, what you were just saying is that, well, generally, we'd say, don't build in floodplain point two percent. But the DRB can't, you know, they can still conserve it, I'm not, they can conserve any, uh, you know, in these ranks, I get that, but I'm just saying in general, if there is something here on this list that actually can be built upon as long as it's done a certain way, doesn't it make just sense to, i- in every reference to that, call it that, it's a restricted build area or something? So just a food for thought.
Okay, that's a good thought. Um, so I'm hearing a lot of nods around option one, this, this seventy percent. Um, if you would like, uh, we can do some, we've already done some mapping, it's in there. Seventy seems to be about the right number, but, um, you know, you, you don't have to decide on seventy percent today. It was, the approach was more critical than the number. In terms of density, uh, and this is the ABC and Michael's D. Let me just sort of say that the basic underlying purpose of one of these options is to demonstrate to a landowner that through a conservation PUD, they're able to achieve as much development as they could have had they been a straight subdivision. The same amount of development is able to be achieved to them. So the way that we do it today is, uh, option A. We don't, we don't, we just, we just say, uh, in all circumstances, um, we count hazards towards density. In the future, if you wanted, you could say a straight subdivision, as, as we we looked at earlier, doesn't get to count, um, hazards. I think, you know, there's been a fair amount of community recognition that hazards aren't really buildable areas to begin with. And so you could choose to, uh, allow the, to, to be equivalent to a straight subdivision, you could go with option B there. Option C is something that's a little bit of a hybrid recognizing that our, that our own history, we've previously allowed density from hazards to be transferred over. And so you may find that that's more sort of palatable to you. And then Michael had an idea that, um, I think I'd probably have to see, I'd have to talk a little more about, um, understand it a little bit more thoroughly, Michael. Before being able to say anything about it.
Um, you mean option D?
Yes.
Well, do you want me to just note it and then send it to you? Because I, I've distinguished between if, if, if an area of hazards is less than seventy percent, you could do this. If it's more than seventy percent, you could do that. So, yeah. And, you know, it was just transferring density from, if it's, if it's more than seventy percent, then you can allow, uh, transfer of density from certain level two land first. Because it's of a lower, uh, lower order of, of conservation, if you like. And if that's not enough, then you can allow, um, transfer of density from some level one land. That was option D.
Um, the other thing I'll mention here is, back to your conversation from a couple of weeks ago, you can incentivize more than seventy percent to be conserved also. You know, you could say that, uh, if somebody does, uh, um, you know, some affordable housing or they do, um, they want to do that sort of what, what Noah Hyman wanted to do, which is state lots. You could, you can, you can create any incentives you want to entice somebody to conserve even more than this. And I didn't go into it in this memo because I, that, you know, that's too many additional variables. I want to get the, the foundational element, but I just want you, you'd be thinking about, um, you can, you can add to it later.
Yeah, so, and looking at these and the discussion.
Yeah, we should just work with.
Um, Bernie, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, so after the discussion and, and, and stuff and looking at it, I kind of like option B, um, for the reason that you stated, Paul, and that's that, you know, we've never really allowed transfer of, you know, the, the hazardous stuff before. And so I would be, I guess, um, resistant to allowing, you know, transfer of density from, you know, and I think Ted has mentioned this before, you know, if it's a, if it's a swamp and they couldn't build there, why allow them to transfer that density? So.
Right.
Um, so I kind of like options.
Just to be clear, the current regulations within a PUD do allow you to transfer from a hazard.
Oh, they do? Oh, I thought you said they didn't.
Right. Now, today, they do not, they do, excuse me. So this is.
So, so I would then, I still would do option B because I liked Ted's argument from, well, several times, that, you know, uh, allowing people to transfer density from something they could have never built on before is, um, is pretty generous. So, um, so I kind of like option, option B. And because that's the stuff that, you know, we're, we're kind of, um, regulating that we haven't regulated before. And I'm, I'm certainly supportive of, you know, the whole economic value of the property, allowing people, if they're going to build on the thirty percent, being able to, you know, get credit for that density for some of the stuff that we're, we're now regulating. So I like option B. But having said that, um, you know, in terms of Michael's option D, um, I guess I would want to just see that language in writing because I don't really have an, I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding it. And so it would be good to kind of, um, see that in writing to make a final decision on it, but, um, I'm at option B right now.
I can explain that, Bernie, because, oh, what I'm saying is basically the same as option B, but prioritize, if you have to transfer density, transfer density from the least valuable resources first, then be level two, and then from level one.
Okay, I get it. And, and maybe that would be good, but I, I guess I'd want to see, you know, the language on that. I kind of get what you're getting at, but, um, my mind's a little foggy at this point. So I, I'd kind of like, you know, it, it may be in fact the way to go, but, you know, ha- having the actual writing would, would help me with that quite a bit, so.
Okay, Duncan?
Um, I, I actually like option C, if we can somehow use the hazards as an incentive to preserve more land. I think that's an attractive option, if we can do that. If they're going to conserve eighty or eighty-five percent of the land, give them some value of the hazards. I think I, we've talked about that in the past, I know.
That might be a way to incentivize more.
Yeah, I, I, I think that there should, if, if somebody's going to go above and beyond, I think that they should get some benefit to that land.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, I'd, some, maybe some hybrid of B and C, but I don't, I'm not sure. Yep.
Well, it's almost, it's almost a little bit of A, you know, because if you somehow did, like, if they did conserve above and beyond the seventy percent, I guess we would want to consider if it's a full transfer of anything above the seventy percent. I don't, I don't know, just throwing that out there.
Okay, we can, we can work on some, some, um, findings, some thresholds if folks like that idea. Plus, I'm, uh, more than happy to see Michael's and see if that might, might work for the sort of above and below seventy percent thing.
Yeah.
Yep.
Monica, go ahead. No, I just was going to ask, because I'd still like to discuss converting away from land and converting over to buildable in conservation PUDs. Does that, doesn't that help more? Like, I mean, doesn't that help the, isn't that a greater incentive? What, what, what if we just go to buildable? It kind of, it, it removes all of the density questions. It just gives them the chance to, then maybe it's building type and they can have some flexibility in the building type. But I'm not convinced you can't just go the buildable, build type route.
So you're suggesting allow buildable in the level two and not subtracting it out? Is that where you're at, Monica?
No, no, I'm sorry, um, removing density.
Density.
Going with the, not the land based, but the built, the build style based.
Monica, the reason that we were sort of leaning the direction that we, that we're at is, is twofold. One is, um, it's, if somebody was choosing a conservation PUD, this approach is a very clear, direct link to what they could have done as a straight subdivision. So from a legal takings perspective, it's a much more clear line. The other one that we kind of mocked up, um, internally with, uh, with our consultant was, would somebody choose the building based approach? And then ultimately wind up doing sort of something like a TND, but without the requirements of being a TND? So our sort of thoughts were if somebody has enough land to do a proper TND, that's what they should do. Because that's why you came up with those rules. And then they can, they can conserve the rest of the land. The worry would be that somebody would sort of have twenty-five acres or fifteen acres of land that is developable in a conservation PUD. But then they don't really have to meet a lot of the TND standards of parks and, and all that kind of thing.
I know, but, but they're, but it's almost a carrot because they're conserving. I mean, the park is the walk in the natural habitat that you can do. It still seems, i- 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 at least I would, I would ask that it be looked at because if it is, I don't know if it's more beneficial for, but that fifteen to twenty-five, whatever acres to have that flexibility. But to me, that is, that's the, the, the benefit is that you're conserving that land. And therefore, yeah, you don't have to have the street trees and whatever. But if they can, i- if they can have that flexibility, um, I would just ask that we at least look at that. Did I stupefy everybody with that comment?
I'm stupefied, but, um, but it's just me at this point.
I think I'm just trying to scroll Paul's screen, which doesn't work.
Which way do you want me to scroll?
I don't know, I was just going down to that table again, but, um, I, I don't know if there's any more to discuss on this at this point. I mean, it feels like we maybe need to, like, flush out that D option, um.
It sounds like in general, we're in agreement of being able to transfer density on some mechanism on some of that conserve land so that they can build on the, the remaining thirty percent. And then I think what I'm hearing Monica say is, is that maybe we could build on a little bit more. But, um, I think the idea of being able to use the density is, is a good idea, so.
I'm not proposing building on more, like, if it's going to be seventy percent, I'm still saying that's what it is. I'm just saying then on that thirty percent, remove density from the equation, move it over to the building type. And, you know, let people perhaps build more dense, um, you know, more densely if, if it, if it conserves the land and free them up from putting money to the street trees.
So you're, you're back to like last meeting where we had, where we had the discussion between, um, building type and, and acreage. Got it. All right, I, I understand that.
Which would alleviate all of these, you know, transfer this, don't transfer that.
Well, I, I think the point that Paul was making, and I kind of agree with it, is, um, if we're going to do that, I think we need all those other standards that go along with it as well, which at this point would be one of those other PUD types.
Right, and it would, so, so we're trying to make this conservation PUD unique. And so that's why we're, we're doing it. And I think when we did talk about it two weeks ago, um, we talked about the building type approach versus the the lot size approach. And I think we had decided that the building type approach was applicable for the other PUDs. But for this PUD, we were going to go with, um, you know, transferring density and and doing it that way for the reasons that that Paul talked about and that we talked about a couple of weeks ago. So. But I'm starting to get confused.
Yeah, I mean, I know that we said that, but we hadn't really talked about this part yet. So I just didn't feel like it was resolved. I would like to know if it if it matters to developers, is there a benefit or to landowners? Is there a benefit? Does it streamline things to go the building type? And would would the community be, would accept having more dense building type? And let them just have as much density as they can, otherwise have the restrictions. So I would, I would hope that we could at least keep it on the table somehow unless everyone wants to just remove it.
Well, you know, I think there's.
Like, it sounds like that, according to Paul, essentially what you're getting is you're getting small TND on on that land. Instead of conservation PUD, you're getting, if I understand you correctly, Paul, you're getting a traditional neighborhood development in a much smaller denser area.
Right. Well, I guess what 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 staff had been thinking about was that, you know, once you reach a certain amount of of buildable land, let's say you had, you know, uh, ten acres of buildable land. I I I think that the direction that you gave is that you would like to have those ten acres build out as a traditional neighborhood. If you've got ten acres of buildable land, whether it came as a result of it being thirty percent of the property or because that's the entirety of the property, that that you're building that as as a neighborhood. And so we wanted to sort of draw the incentives to where somebody would find this sort of tipping point and then say, boy, I don't really wanna be a conservation PUD. I would actually prefer to be a TND. But if if commissioners would like, we can take a look again at that, at that tipping point. We were trying to draw a distinction between what a conservation PUD is versus a versus a TND. But there is certainly some overlap. If you had a fifty-acre parcel and, you know, you had, what is it, fifteen acres of developable land, that could be one or the other conceivably.
And that's really more of the, what our cases are generally going to be, I would think. You know, so it's not, to me, it's just giving the flexibility and further incentive for conservation because they can still do. They can, they can, they would be able to have the flexibility to design it however they wanted to unless we implemented min- minimums.
But but I think that's what the differentiator is, is that if they choose to go with a a TND, then they go with the building type, you know, whether it's on five acres or fifty acres, you know, they do it as a TND. But if 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 they decide to do it as a conservation PUD, then then these other standards apply. So so they do have the flexibility with, you know, what they do with that thirty percent. They can, they could still do it as a TND and and use the building type if they wanted to. If they, if they felt that they wanted to do it as a conservation, then then they would do it this way.
Right. The difference is that if they were a TND, they don't get to, let's say the property was eighty percent forested areas, they don't get to touch those ten, that ten percent of forested areas if they're a TND. They don't, they don't get to pick and choose.
Right, but they're, but they're gonna be able to decide that, you know, using these different mechanisms. You know, they're gonna know how many acres they have. They're gonna know how many acres are gonna be, you know, required to be set aside. You know, and they can look at whether they wanna do it as a conservation PUD and go with the seventy percent or whether they wanna go with a TND, you know, with the advantages and disadvantages that are inherent with that. And that that would be their flexibility in what they would get to choose. And if they choose to go with a a TND, then, you know, the building standards and all that would apply. If they, if they choose to go with a conservation PUD and you know, be able to do something with the thirty percent, then then, you know, this would apply and and they could head down that direction. And they'd have flexibility too. So. I don't know, but I, you know, I get, I get, you know, so overall, and and this is, I mean, we're gonna do this anyway, is you know, th- there'll be public hearings and certainly the the developers will get to weigh in on, you know, whether they think we're crazy or not. And you know, so there's, there's gonna be plenty of opportunity to to get input on this, you know, through our public hearings and, you know, the two that we warned and the one that the city council warns. So there'll be a chance for tweaking it, I guess, and getting feedback. But I guess, you know, gut feeling right now is I, I kinda get where we're at and I'm okay with it.
So just to, just to sort of wrap up this part of the conversation, I heard across the board that there was generally folks supported option one in terms of the approach. There's some discussion to be had around the density transfer. Folks seem to like option B in there, but possibly, you know, create some incentives to do more and or what Michael was was suggesting as a D. Uh, is that, is that a good sort of summary at of this item for for the moment? And I suggest, Jessica, we had talked about the possibility of setting up a special meeting for next week. Before we go on to the next item of forest habitats, I wanna be aware that it's almost nine o'clock and you've got the Shearer item at least. Do you wanna talk about a possibility of a special meeting or how, when you wanna take on the forest part of this? Before you start into a conversation on it?
Yeah, cuz then there's also the items four and five, which are about the southeast quadrant, TDRs and the NRP, which we didn't get to either. So.
Yeah, I wasn't necessarily suggesting that you get into too much on that tonight. I mostly just gave you that as context cuz I know it's been on people's minds. I wasn't necessarily suggesting like, let's dive into it at this meeting.
Okay. Then, yes, I think that makes sense. I mean, do considering it's nine, do people think that we wanna add an extra meeting to really dive into the mapping and the forest block information?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I would be supportive of that. We need to keep this rolling. So I think if we get behind, we need to have makeup sessions.
So next week is like the fifth, fifth Tuesday week. I don't know if we wanna talk right now about when we're available.
I would be supportive of same time next week cuz it's just a regular meeting time and keep chugging.
Do would, would Wednesday be a possibility for the group? I know it's not our normal night, but it is a special meeting anyway.
It works for me.
I have, I almost any day is okay for me because I have nothing to do. I'll be in total incarceration in in an apartment in Montreal, which I will not be able to leave for two weeks. So, but so it happens. I have another meeting on the thirtieth, a board meeting which so Tuesday would be better for me.
I'm good with either.
Or Thursday.
Either. I'm good for either.
Okay, what seems like Wednesday wasn't working for Michael.
Do you want me to send out a doodle?
Yeah, maybe we can.
For Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
Yeah, and then we can consider all three dates. Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay, let me do that.
That helps us move along. Okay, so I think at this point, we can switch right down to the the share item, the LDR amendment, increased coverage in the urban design overlay district.
All right, so I'll try to be quick here. At your last meeting that you talked about this, you asked staff to look into two options for you, two additional options. If you remember, the original option was to allow for a small open space on the property. You asked us to look into, could there be a payment in lieu? And could TDRs be used? So the answer is yes and yes. I talked for a little while with our city attorney about the payment of li- payment in lieu. It's perfectly fine as long as you can draw a rational nexus to between what you're allowing and what people are funding. So for instance, if you were to say we're allowing additional lot coverage on an area that otherwise would have been green and what people would need to do in a payment lieu is to pay into the city's open space fund in order to acquire and enhance open spaces, that's a reasonable nexus. And especially because this is a bonus and not a requirement, that's about as far as it needs to go. So that option is absolutely on the table. We would just need to know from you, you know, essentially, what's the amount? And then from there, we can work how to do it. What we would probably do is we would base it the amount on the assessed value of the property. That's what we do in the Form Based Code District. So we would say it's X percentage of the assessed value of the land, not of the buildings, but that's how we would do it. And if you wanted to go with that approach as the option or an option, we can mock that up very quickly and give it back to you as actual language. The second. Say that, Michael?
What's the X? What, the sentence, what's the X that you have in mind? The X percentage of the value?
Oh. In the basically, we were thinking that, you know, if if we draw an equivalent to the TDRs, which is the next conversation, let's say you were to decide the two TDRs is the right amount for, or one TDR is the right amount for ten thousand square feet. Then, you know, dollar value-wise, a TDR is about ten to fifteen thousand dollars. So the X in this scenario would probably try to be equivalent to that. So we would look to see what the average value of properties is in the area and work back from there as to what the amount should be. So we were.
The the ten to fifteen thousand is a is a big range. And the most recent number that I have from the Vermont Land Trust is eight thousand. But that was for a large number, for thirty-eight TDRs, and they were eight thousand a piece.
Right.
So somewhere maybe eight to ten is is okay, ten to fifteen. The, we haven't sold any at fifteen thousand since the invention of dirt.
Well, can I just say, before we get into the details of that, can we talk about the TDR one? Cuz I have a pretty strong opinion.
So the second option here that you asked us to look into is TDRs, and this is not intended to be the rewrite of TDRs. Michael has put a lot of effort into thinking about how to do it more thoroughly as matched with the TDR committee's recommendations. This in drafting this, staff's objective was to make the fewest changes possible to the current one so as to have it apply in a circumstance like this. So it's basically a pilot project. So what we did essentially was we kept the sending areas exactly the same and the receiving, there'd be a transit, uh, translation that would say that if you're transferring a residential dwelling unit, which is what you do in the southeast quadrant, that it's the same thing as it always was. It's point eight-three acres, transfers over to being one residential unit. And if you're move, if you're doing it in the urban design overlay district, then you would get five or ten thousand square feet is equal to one TDR. And that number is up to you guys to figure out. The 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 sort of interesting thing about doing this as a pilot project is, as as Michael, I'm sure, well, as he just pointed out, the value of TDRs is something that, you know, there's just not a ton of data on. And so, you know, we can, that's, that's gonna be one of the challenges of doing the full TDR deployment is how you set, how do you, how do you encourage the market to give a a good value to a TDR? So this lets you test that out a little bit.
Paul, when something is what you call the pilot program, can it be implemented in a way without having to go through the full, you know, we're changing an LDR when we do this? Or does it still follow the whole approval process?
Yeah, when I say pilot, I really mean as opposed to applying it citywide for all sorts of circumstances. Similar to when we first adopted our stormwater standards, they only applied in the Bartlett Brook watershed to see how they would work. And then after they worked pretty well and we we've worked out some kinks, it then was expanded to be a citywide standard. That's what I meant by pilot. Unfortunately, that's the, the only way to allow regulatory option is through the full adoption under Vermont law.
Well, my very strong opinion is we should only do the TDR version, even if it then takes a little longer because we're in a situation where we need to fix the TDR marketplace. And if we create, this is the perfect extension of the program. And if we create an alternate option, it does not help the TDR marketplace. And that's what interim zoning was asking us to do. So that's my two cents. But it's unfortunate we'd have to go through that whole process.
And I, on this one, fall on the complete opposite court. I'm, I'm keeping it simple and just doing a a payment to go towards the parks and and doing it that way. So opposite. But, um, anyway.
If Bernie and I were the only two here, I'd be willing to negotiate and say, as a pilot program, if we were to do it that way for now, to kind of explore how some of this can work and think about the language. But when we do go to reconsider the TDRs, I would ask that that alternate route be ended and absorbed into TDRs until the TDRs are exhausted.
So so I guess that's an interesting curiously question that you bring up, Monica, is, is do we have work left to do on the the TDRs to get them implemented?
Well, if we move.
Yeah, so can, can we solve this by by doing the kind of the simple buyout? But you know, I kind of absolutely agree. If we're gonna be doing the TDRs that, you know, maybe on a broader scale, we could, we could do it. Rerelook at it when we do the TDRs.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do TDRs and affordable housing because if we go to building type, we're null and voiding the TDR program and the affordable housing density bonuses. So we absolutely will be going through this, you know, soon.
Um, Duncan?
Yeah, I, I would agree with Monica. I mean, this is a great way. We've talked about trying to expand the demand for TDRs and having it work in a commercial situation like is critical to creating more of a market. You know, I'm, I'm okay with still having the payment method, but I think at least trying this TDR method, we've gotta do it. It's, it's the way to expand the market. That's, that's what we talked about when Michael showed us all those examples of communities doing it. They all had a commercial component. So I think that we, this is a perfect opportunity to try this. I would still say we could have the payment thing, whether that gets folded later when the TDRs are fully rolled out. Who knows? But.
Can, can we do both?
Yeah, maybe we could do something where the payment in lieu option, the the dollar amount set a little, a little higher, kind of on the higher end of the TDR market price to maybe encourage people to buy the TDR maybe as a first option.
You might wanna do, if you had both options, I'd probably encourage you to do what Jessica just said because the TDR does involve some legal legwork too, so it's not just the straight purchase price. I guess my only recommendation along that front is you also had the very first option of the onsite open space. I think in terms of addressing the specific question that Mr. Shearer had brought forward, I'd say maybe pick two of the three and not try to do three amendments all at once that are all options for the same solution. But if you wanna do TDRs in the buyout and not do the onsite open space as day one, that would be fine. It's just, it's, it becomes a lot of variables to have three different ways to achieve the same end.
I would go with the two.
Ted, which two do you think so? Do you wanna vote on your two?
There's, there's a timing consideration from the point of view of of Mr. Shearer. Obviously, the buyout can be done much easier, if I'm not mistaken, Paul. It doesn't require as much legal legwork as as getting this TDR ordinance amended. Is that right?
It's a big lot of work for you either way. It would be, it would be in the next round of amendments whenever you do that. For Mr. Shearer, when it comes to choosing one, it's simpler to do a buyout than to purchase a TDR from somebody. He has to go find somebody, has to do the legal encumbrances. That's what I meant by it's longer. And I feel that the language is equally advanced here that we could probably. We could probably do one or both of these in the same time period from your legislative end.
Paul, I don't know.
I mean, the TDR.
Possible compromise and the buyout version, instead of going to a park. Is it possible to put it into a holding account for TDR purchase? And I know what's tricky about that is we don't know, the city doesn't want to be negotiating buying a TDR, but. Eventually it could go towards, you know, maybe. It can be set at a certain price and maybe a TDR owner can opt to say, yeah, that's probably lower than I'd get if I went on the open market, but I'd be willing to take that for a TDR. You know.
I guess Monica, what I would suggest is from a strictly, you know, running city finances perspective. Giving the council the flexibility to use whatever additional money that goes into the open space fund to. Acquire to be part of an acquisition of a, of a piece of land is more useful than having. 10, 20, 30, whatever the number that's specifically only targeted to ever be using for a TDR because it sort of locks them into. You know, spending a lot of, a lot of staff time to find somebody who wants to send to buy one TDR instead of being able to say, this is the thing that. You know, for instance, the city contributed $15,000 to make the nature conservancy. Land conservation that was mostly in Shelburne, Work and South Burlington. You know, they're able to be a small piece of 100 acre conservation. That's probably more valuable on a sort of one or two TDR basis for now.
I hear you, but the city committed to a TDR program and the city has not, the city as a whole. And the city has not established a, a powerful marketplace. So I, it, we can't keep finding easy ways to not get TDR sold. We have to get the TDRs dealt with.
I think, you know, Mr. Shearer's been waiting for a long time and I. At first I thought the TDR was a great idea, but. If there's no marketplace and there's none for sale. Then he's going to be held up even longer. So I think probably something that's more. Something that expedite. What he really wanted to do. So I think I'll take my TDR request off the table.
But just to be clear, there are TDRs for sale. There are landlords that are looking for buyers. They just don't.
Okay. I didn't realize that.
And we know. There are TDRs for sale, but not, but the owners would prefer to sell them outside the SEQ, for example. We know about a few of those. So I would ask that you leave that on the table. And, and going, going the TDR route has the other advantage of covering. A larger market area in the urban, urban design overlay districts, not just Mr. Shearer's parking lot.
Okay. It runs for sale.
Yeah, I guess I feel like the, this, this amendment is, I think, a really good step forward for us for expanding the marketplace for TDRs. So I mean, it feels like the language that's here makes sense to move forward. I don't know if it. Mr. Shearer wants to use this approach or not, but you know, it does feel like a good step forward. It's a mini step. Towards TDR changes, but it seems like a good one to me.
So I think Paul suggested to allow a couple of different options is a good one. You know.
So I heard from.
So I was kind of, I was kind of originally with the pocket park. And the buyout, but I guess I could. You know, I could be, if, it sounds like it's everybody else wants the TDR and so that's fine. We just need to come up with what the second option is. And I guess between the two, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other. So.
And can I just be mean, can I be mean for a minute? And it's not personal to, to Mr. Shearer, but there, we are setting a precedent here. And currently he can't do what he wants to do, period. He doesn't really need. Options. We, we have a mission. We have a possible solution that has multiple benefits. I don't feel that we're obligated to provide options. I think he would just like a resolution quickly. But I don't need, feel that we need an option. So I'm going to continue to be hardcore TDR.
Go ahead Duncan.
Jessica, you mentioned it earlier. If we provide both options, but sort of raise the cost on the first one and incentivize, try to incentivize somebody to do the TDR. Is there a way to do that? Somewhere?
Yeah, I mean, we have, we would have to set the, the price of a payment in lieu. So yes, I think. Based on kind of what Michael was saying, you know, they have a general idea of the range. You know, if we would set a payment in lieu option to be on the more expensive end of that range, you know, it would still give the both options, but really incentivize the TDR approach.
Yeah, I would, I would be. The, the price of the TDR will be negotiated between, if it goes that way, between Mr. Shearer and whoever owns the TDR. They'll, they'll figure out the price. And if we set option one, the buyout at. Whatever the number is, it comes out at $15,000 and there are TDRs available to cover the same area for $10,000. That's the way he's gonna go.
But also.
I think the only thing to be aware of here, as I said before, is that there is some legwork and some legal expense with doing a TDR. And so if the, if a TDR was worth $15,000 and a buyout was $15,000. 10 times out of 10, somebody would pick the buyout because it's less work.
Right. And also we're, we're, if we, even when we put this, this. Pilot program in place, we can't block other people from also jumping on that ship. I mean, we may be taking a lot of TDR opportunities off the table. When we put this pilot program in place as a buyout, it's easy and, you know, can happen.
You could also choose.
I think we agree that the, we're going to keep the TDR option. I mean, it sounds like everybody. You know, I have some reservations, but it sounds like everybody's pretty much on board with the TDR option. The question is, is whether we want to allow. A second option or not and what that is. And I guess.
Right. I'm just saying you allow a second option.
An enhanced buyout.
But if, but what I'm saying is if we allow a buyout now, we can't assume that only one person's going to take it. And that may end up taking a number, a number of people may jump on that opportunity. And those are. Those are TDRs that, that could in the future have been, have been resolved. And it's exactly what TDR holders are looking for. They're looking for ways to send their TDRs out of the SEQ. And so if we open this up now with an alternative that's fast and easy. Anyone else out there has the notion, I'd say they'd probably do it now too. And I think that's harming our long-term. You know, goal. So if we do do the payout, I would ask it be temporary, but I would, I would more strongly suggest we just go for a modified, modified TDR. So.
I like the park option too, which I know isn't on right here, but. You know, it seemed like a nice.
I'd be more comfortable with that too, as that and the TDR versus the buyout.
It was kind of the original thing we talked about.
Yeah. I mean, that's where we were originally at was we told him he had to do a park and he kind of. You know, balked at that. And so we were looking at, that's why we asked this question on the other thing. So I'd be okay with a park or the TDRs and then. You know, he's got a couple of ways he can go and, you know, I'm fine with that.
His objection to the park was that he didn't have the land for it. And, and if, so I, I would suggest we just approach him. With the TDRs only and, you know, this is a pilot project. This is a test case. Let's, let's see what he does.
Well, so, you know, I don't want to put Joe on the spot here, but we did get comments after our last meeting. Through Joe Wyeth. And I do see he's on. So I guess I just, in general, not to put anyone on the spot, but if any public member wants to kind of weigh in on this discussion, you can speak up or raise your hand or unmute.
Hi.
Hi.
Good morning. Your wife here. How's it going? Is this a good time for me just to pipe in?
Yes, please.
Okay, thanks. So, yeah, Bill is out of town, so he was not able to, to join the meeting tonight. So he asked me to. Follow along, see what was going on and also just kind of reiterate some of the suggestions we've made in the past and just some of our thoughts regarding this most recent. Draft, but. You know, I think Bill's preference is to keep it as simple as possible and affordable. And I think we said in the follow-up email we sent after the last meeting. We had suggested that there be a menu of options. That would allow a property owner to use the approach that works best for their particular property, their, their particular use and their particular situation. You know, so we, you know, we, we would support seeing. You know, the option of the parklet. Or the mini park, if that works for somebody, the option of the payment in lieu. Fund, the option of the TDR. And then, you know, another option we had suggested after that last meeting, and I don't know if the subcommittee even talked about this, but. Would maybe even be some kind of. An op, an option that would provide for enhanced landscaping or screening or something, or some kind of beautification of the property. Again, we think the more options, the better because. You know, every. Property is different, every use is different and. You know, the, these are areas where the, the city would like to see growth. So I think this is offering that flexibility would be beneficial. So again, we ask you to. Consider the multiple options rather than just choosing one. And in regard to. You know, the discussion tonight, which has been primarily between the payment and lieu and the TDR. You know, I, I'd have to talk to Bill about this in more detail, but. You know, I think that. He would. Probably prefer the payment in lieu because it's simpler and there's predictability. In how much it would cost. With the TDR, we don't know how much it's going to cost because it's market driven. And in a year or two from now, when Bill is ready to do something, who knows? What the marketplace is going to be like, you know, who knows if there's even going to be any TDRs available for sale? And if so, what are they going to cost? So there, there's concern there. So, so the payment in lieu, there's, you know, it's definitely, there'll be a, a formula that's established and. It will be predictable. So I think he would probably prefer that over the TDR. So. You know, that's, that's kind of where we're falling on this right now and. You know, we look forward to seeing the next draft just so we can really get a much better idea of what we think that the, that the potential cost could be.
Seeing a item in the chat from Sanji Dooley, supporting the TDR option. You know, I, I don't know if everyone can see that there, but. Great. Any other comments on anything? On this item or the approach?
Just where did we end up?
Yeah. Well, it sounds like various ones of us are in favor of all three of those options.
Oh, why don't we just leave all three? It sounds like the landowner doesn't have any problem with, with leaving all three. You know, I think our reservation for all three was, was Paul was concerned with having three, but.
And Monica has argued very strongly against the payment in lieu option.
Well, and, and I, I just want to remind everybody, I mean, I, I, I would love to find a solution for this, for this business and I would love for it to work for others. I think that's, there's something good happening here. But we don't owe. An, an opportunity for some people to buy their way out of our LDRs. I mean, we have, we have LDRs here. We don't owe anybody any change to them at all. And so I think that we need to be very cautious about. Creating these kinds of situations and we know that we have in interim zoning. This need. So I, I'm sorry, I just, I, I, we, I, I appreciate that he has brought this forward because he's actually helping us find a solution. So I, let me make sure that they understand that. But we don't owe anyone any options. And if we, if we add more, I think it only complicates things. I think we, you know, keep it simple.
And, and the TDR option, you know, furthers the, the aims of the city and of the, and, and of city planning. While it might, might not be the best solution for, for Mr. Shearer. It is a solution which also fits with the objectives of. Of the city's plans and, and how, how the city should develop. And, and focuses. Development in the areas where we want it.
So Jessica, can I suggest that we just do a straw poll? And, you know, let it shake out the way it shakes out. So I'm with keeping all three options and having the buyout option be. Enhanced to encourage going with the other two, but I, I'd keep all three. So that's where I'm at. And then. You guys can be where you're at and however it ends up is fine.
I agree with Bernie. I'll go with Bernie. I'm with Bernie.
I have a question before you both.
Go ahead, Paul.
I would go, I would go with, with the two options, but only and the buyout option. Be, be. What's the word I'm, I'm looking for? Be developed in a way that would incentivize the, the, the property owner to go towards TDRs. Cause it would be less expensive. Just buyout and TDRs, but TDRs being the primary objective by making the buyout less attractive than the TDRs.
Okay. Paul Ingus?
Yeah, a question for Paul Connor. Have TDRs been used? Are there examples of TDRs that have actually been used?
There have been TDRs used in the Southeast quadrant. Currently they can only be used in the Southeast quadrant.
Well, I understand that, but there was a time when no one had used a TDR, even though they'd been. You know.
It hasn't been widely used. And I think Michael can probably speak to this as well, if not better than I can about some of the problems that have been found in it, but. It, it has been used, but not widely. There hasn't been a, a dramatic market for it, I guess, is probably one of the key problems. Michael, do you want to elaborate on that? Cause I think you're probably as much an expert in this as anybody.
Yeah, I'm quick. Paul, do you mean, has it been used for. Commercial and or residential density. By South Burlington or by other?
South Burlington. South Burlington.
Not outside the SEQ and that one of the reasons that the market has been limited is because the only place that somebody can sell a TDR is within the SEQ. And many people who own TDRs do not want to see. Land in the, in the SEQ. See increased density on land in the SEQ. So they're holding on to them until they can sell them elsewhere.
Yeah, I understand that.
So yes, but quite a few have been sold, not a lot.
They've been sold, but only within the SEQ.
Yes.
Has anybody in the SEQ used them to build anything?
Say that again?
Has anyone used a TDR to build anything?
Yeah, the largest one that's been used, Paul, is the Bri neighborhood, which is just immediately north of Oak Creek Village. There were 20 something that have been used there. There's been a number of sort of one or two TDR usages in various spots where somebody had a, you know, one acre parcel and they wanted to put two homes on it. There have been, the Cider Mill Two neighborhood has them approved, but has not been built. And then the Spear Meadows neighborhood uses a bunch of them, but that court, that's been in appeal at various levels for years. So they're approved, but, but. That's been in litigation. So.
That's the one I'm also aware of. Yeah.
Cider Mill One as, as well, Paul. I thought there were TDRs used.
I think so too.
I don't believe, I think in Cider Mill One, they used the balance of the land.
Cider Mill One, what's Cider Mill Two?
Is that a question?
Internal transfer.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Um, so based on that.
Yeah, I'm gonna hold out for TDR only. So. Our TDR only. So I don't, and then the minority.
Part of holding out.
I can shorten my straw, the TDRs only. I can shorten my straw to TDRs only. So that's two.
And one reason for that is that the people need to get paid. That's the biggest problem. People are counting on their land having value.
Um, so Paul, were you weighing in on where you stood on the different options? You didn't catch it.
Well, I mean, I, I don't understand the other two options yet. So it'd be hard for me to say. What is buyout? What does that mean?
So.
Basically means, Paul, in that. If, if somebody wanted, um, let's say ten thousand square feet of additional lot coverage, they would pay the city a dollar amount. Um, that would go into the city's open space fund. And then they would, you know, by demonstrating that they've written that check, they'd be able to do the more lot coverage. So that's, it's a simple purchase essentially of, of that. So it's, it's the most simple one, but it doesn't necessarily achieve some of the, the other objectives.
There was a time when we were considering paying, uh, the people who are holding the TDRs. Have the city just buy out the TDRs?
Yeah, well, there was, it was, it was one of the options in our report, but the, but the city doesn't have, uh, the financial wherewithal to do.
I couldn't hear you, Michael.
I, I said, that was one of the options listed in the TDR report, but, but we discounted it because the city doesn't have the financial wherewithal to buy out all these TDRs. It went around to many millions of dollars.
And what's the third option?
The third option, Paul, would be to allow for a, um, increased lot coverage on the site in exchange for building a small, uh, pocket park on that same property.
Okay.
Which was the original idea presented, but Bill, in this instance, felt that he didn't have any appropriate place to do it on his property. And so he could spend the money, but it would be for something that was, in his view, sort of unattractive and, you know, next to a power line and, and, you know, not really accomplishing anything in his view.
Okay.
And, and I thought because of that, that option was off the table. Cause he's not interested in it. And the land we looked at, uh, on the, on the northeast side of his property and along, the, the, the southern, the south side of his showroom, just not suitable for, for a pocket park. So he doesn't want to do it and thought he basically dropped that idea.
But, but again, we're looking at this, it's an LDR change. So it's, even though we're kind of thinking about his property, we're doing it so it's applicable to many areas. And, and that was, you know, Monica's point was, you know, this is, you know, other people have the opportunity to use whatever we come up with.
Certainly for, for the TDR option, yes. It would be widely applicable.
Well, and so would the other two potentially, but you know, again, it, it comes down to the straw poll and what we want to have in the regulation. And, but it certainly, whatever we come up with is applicable to, you know, potentially more than one property.
And can I just add that in the TDR committee, we did hear TDR owners have sensitivity to having to be in competition with the city who owns TDRs. Okay. Now I know that that's, the buyout is not that because it's not, we're not saying, oh, we'll make it easy for you to buy out the city's TDRs. But what I am hearing is it's saying, oh, no, it, I know it's complicated for you to buy a residence TDR. We'll make it easy for you to donate to our city open space committee. So it kind of is still competing with the residents that we have an agreement with to help them, you know, sell their TDRs.
I agree with you, Mark, Monica, that, that option hurts the marketplace, marketplace for TDRs.
So are you, are you, uh, Paul, are you saying you favor TDR only, like Monica and I?
Given all of these terrible options, I would favor TDRs only. Because of the landowners who, if they're not, they're just never going to get paid otherwise.
So we're at three, three, Jessica.
Which, because the problem is I actually like a different option than any of you. So I'm not actually a tiebreaker. Um, I like. The TDRs and the park option because park space is also one of our big um, priorities. And it's also like a, one of the things we're also trying to work on with under interim zoning, um, with the PUD is trying to get like better usable park space. So. I mean, I can see how the buyout option may not make sense. But if we had two options that are really specific to like our current push and goals, I mean.
I can, I can support that.
I can support that.
I could support that. So.
Unanimous.
We got you.
There we go.
So. Just so that I think I understand it correctly.
That's why you're the chair, Jess.
That's right, leadership.
The options are a TDR or a the park onsite. Is that what you meant, Jessica?
I mean, if somebody could convince someone else to designate a park on their other pro, different property, I think that could be reasonable. But you know, we'd need to site plan and to have it like clearly later. So.
That's, that's good with us. The, the reason that we didn't really want to go with three options is that each one of these takes, you know, legwork to get it done. And then a DRB has to be able to interpret it. And the more different things, the more room there is for, you know, it wasn't quite written the way that folks thought it was going to be written. Then you have to amend sort of three different things. So I'm, I'm happy to see you pick two. So. If you're good with those two, then, um, well, maybe I'll have a, um, given that the, the hour that it is, maybe, uh, if you'd be willing to let me talk with Michael, maybe a little bit more about where to set the, the amount of land to try to incentivize that as being the option that people would want to pick.
Yeah. And I'm sorry, I don't really know the timing needs of this particular, um, community member who's been coming to us with this. But just as, if, if, I mean, he's waited a long time. If he has the ability to wait a little longer, we are going to be going through more of this TDR regulation. So I don't know that it doesn't.
Just to be clear, Monica, the council really asked that the commission address this and get it, you know, one way or the other done.
All right.
Um, so I just want to be fair to everybody involved with that.
You know, you're, the, the, the current, the TDR, uh, amended TDR, as you see before, it is by, it's by no means what I would like to see in, in, but giving up a lot of things just to make the pilot work.
Yeah. Okay. So I think, I think that's all we need to talk for tonight. Get some specific language for this time. And, um, I think the only, the, one other thing is the minute from August twenty fifth.
Motion to approve the minutes for August twenty fifth.
I'll, I'll second that.
Great. Um, all in favor?
Yes. I.
For anyone opposed or abstained? Okay, passed. And then we also had some information about the Shelburne Planning Commission hearing in our packet. If anyone had questions, we could talk about that, but it's mainly in there for just our information.
Let's just read it to ourselves when we go to bed, bedtime reading and adjourn.
Yes. And that's what most of the. Okay, adjourned.
Thank, thank you, everyone. I will, uh, email around tomorrow morning, uh, date selections for your special meeting. All right. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thanks.